Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Transportation and Parking Commission for May the 23rd. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kurkjian.
Here.
Commissioner Yakubian.
Here.
Commissioner Sahakian. Commissioner Bartsov. Chairperson Gonzalez.
Here. And Rubik is going to lead us in the flag salute, please.
Your flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on a nation, a God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rubik. So, Anusha, I don't have any oral communication except one to speak on the, one of the agenda items.
That is correct.
Okay. So, we're going to go to item number four. Do we have three action items? All of them working with the installation, or possible installation of speed bumps, speed dumps, excuse me. So, Rubik, please. Okay. The fact that the agenda has been posted?
Yes.
Item two, posting of agenda. The agenda for the Monday, May 23rd, 2016, special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by May 20th, 2016, before 5:30 PM on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Okay. And number three also, please.
Item three is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
Right. And we have none before us?
Yes. At item 4A is a report regarding installation of speed humps on Elk Avenue, between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street. At 4A1 is a motion approving the installation of three speed humps on Elk Avenue between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street.
So, Rubik, you want to start this off?
Yeah, Chair Gonzalez, members of the commission, this is a standard procedure that our department has followed. We have received an application for speed humps on Elk Avenue, and I will have Wayne Co., our principal traffic engineer, to provide a presentation, and he'll be open it up for questions after that.
Thank you very much. Wayne, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We bring to you today, actually, three requests for speed humps at three different locations, and I'm going to present it one at a time. The first one is Elk Avenue between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street. The second one is Acacia Avenue between Boynton Street and Adams Street. And the third one is Garfield Avenue between Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard. First one, we're going to, basically, the background is the staff received requests from residents on the three speed segments for traffic calming. Of course, their main concern is about high-speed traffic. And as prescribed in the city's adopted neighborhood traffic calming program, staff conducted the following studies. We collected 24-hour traffic volume counts, speech surveys, and also field investigations. And the first segment we're going to talk about is speed humps on Elk Avenue between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street. And what we have here is actually a location map of Elk Avenue. As you can see, the Los Angeles Federal Credit Union is here, Johns Market is up here, and this is between Glendale and Everett. And this is an aerial photo of the area. As you can see, there's a lot of high-density residential development on Elk Avenue. This is a shot of Elk Avenue facing westbound, looking towards Glendale Avenue, shot of the mid-block location, and a picture of Elk Avenue looking eastbound towards Everett Street. As you can see, the street is basically parking in both directions, 36 feet curb-to- curb, and again, mostly residential development. The segment of Elk Avenue between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street actually meets all the criterias in the city's traffic calming guidelines. As you can see, the travel lanes is one lane in this direction. It is a residential district. The street classification is a local street. Police speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Eighty-five percentile speed is 30 miles per hour. The daily volume is roughly about 1,200 cars a day, and it's not a truck or transit route. It's not primary fire response route, and the street width is actually 36 feet, less than 40 feet minimum requirement, and they get 83% of the support. So, comments from the residents, actually, they support the speed humps. We have 175 residents out of 210 signed the petition, and it is staff recommendation, since Elk Avenue satisfied the required criteria for the installation of speed humps, as stipulated in the neighborhood traffic calming program, staff is recommending three speed humps on Elk Avenue, and this is the location of the three speed humps. Here, and here. And staff is ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from commissioners on the report?
Yes. Actually, it is 210 residents that includes per door, including single families, multi-unit doors, between Everett and Glendale. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, why do we have a speed bump near the commercial section? Because as I see where Johns Market is and the Credit Union is, in a mid-block over there, that's commercial property, there are no residential's over there, and the only residential's on the south side of the street. Do you think that one over there is warranted, where there's no residential on the north side of the street?
Yeah, actually, Johns Market is right now, currently, they have a driveway on Colorado Street, and just to the east of it is starting with the residential segment.
Yep. That's what I'm saying. There, and from what I remember, there's a great separation between Johns Market and the street level. There's no driveway over there, too.
That's correct.
So, so, but that's a short block. It's not a very long block, knowing the fact that part of it is occupied by commercial overlay from Colorado. Do you think with three street bumps are warranted over there? Don't you think two is sufficient?
The distance, because of that stretch roadway, for two speed humps would be a little bit more. Usually, we want roughly about 200 to 400 feet apart to be effective, and if we put two, that would probably be a too-longer stretch.
I mean, what you're saying, people may pick up speed, because average speed is 30 miles an hour. It's not very, they're not going at excessive speeds.
Actually, that is the 85th percentile speed. 85% of the people driving at that speed. It's not an average, it's 85% of speed. So, the average is actually even lower.
Okay. So, I don't know. Do you really think, what do you think, Rubik? Do you really think that, do we need three speed bumps over there, and two is not sufficient?
Commissioner Kurkjian, these are standards and guidelines that we follow everywhere else in the city, and it has proven to be effective, and like Mr. Co. mentioned, if the distance between two humps are too great, and as you noted, a driver can pick up speed between the humps. So, most effective pattern that we have experienced, and as a standard, are three in a row.
Because in our prior hearings, the average speed's up 45, 50 miles an hour. It's warranted to have more. In this case, the speed is not very high, since the blocks are short. That's what I'm saying. We would, in safety, even though it's our primary concern, but by same token, we've got to move traffic.
We will revisit the area and see if we can adjust the distances, but as it stands, the motion in front of you doesn't specify the number of the speed humps. So, once you approve the motion, we can move forward with additional field investigation and see if we can come up with an effective solution with the proper distance.
I don't know. I don't know. How do you folks feel about it, Maro, and you and Art?
Maro, I have thoughts on it, but please, Maro.
Yeah, no, I definitely defer to the city engineer on the placement of these. This is something that they do quite frequently. There's a method to it, and I don't have a problem with the spacing for Mr. Co.'s explanation, so I have no issue with this.
Nor do I, since you've asked, thank you. I think that the notion of the report is very complete regarding those three, and I think if someone was driving, heading east on Elk off of Glendale, at least it's a kind of a warning or understanding. Once it's determined that the humps are needed, it would seem like the person driving would pick up speed if that hump wasn't there, and then at least they have a warning that there's likely other humps coming on the street. So, I would also defer to the engineering report on this. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, the, actually, the speed humps itself is not, well, actually, the number of speed humps does not depend on the approaching speed, actually. Once you pass the speed humps, basically, you will reduce the speed to roughly about 25 miles per hour, regardless of the approaching speed. Of course, the impact will be a lot more if the approaching speed is higher. This, the distance between the humps is to sustain the traffic calming effect.
I do just have a question. I think I ask this every time this comes up, but the residents, when they're going through the process, are they informed about some of the pros and cons and the facts of being that a car approaching a speed hump that's going to be traveling 10 to 15 miles per hour can produce the same amount of noise as a car traveling about 30 miles an hour on that street? So, there's also a noise issue that, and do you present, Mr. Co.?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yakubian, yes. Actually, in the notification we sent out to the residents about the meeting itself, we also stated the pros and cons of the impact of the speed humps. Yes.
Any further questions or comments? That we have, no comments, no. Only from, for the speed humps on Garfield.
Okay, there we go.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move 4A1.
For the staff recommendation?
Yes. Motion approving the installation of three speed humps on Elk Avenue between Glendale Avenue and Everett Street.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kurkjian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Chairperson Gonzalez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We're going to go to 4B on Acacia Avenue.
Okay. 4B is, this is a speed humps on Acacia Avenue between Boynton Avenue and Adams Street. And again, this is a location map of the, of the street, and we have Horseman's Elementary School here, from Boynton all the way to Adams. This is an aerial photo of the street, and a view of Acacia Avenue facing westbound towards Boynton Street, view of the mid-block location, and view of Acacia Avenue looking backward, looking the other way, towards eastbound, towards Adams Street. The street width on Acacia actually varies from 30 to 36 feet at different section. And again, this street actually meets all the criteria in the traffic calming guidelines. These 85 percentile speed is 31 miles per hour, and the volume is 2,514 cars a day. Street width is 30 to 36. They have 75% support from the residents. And they got 303 centrist over the 404 residents signed the petition. It is staff's recommendation to install four speed humps on Acacia Avenue. And the location of the four speed humps are shown here. And actually, Acacia is a very long stretch of roadway, and it's, that's why we have four speed humps. It's almost 2,000, a little bit over 2,100 feet.
Any questions or comments for staff on this report from commissioners? Okay. Hearing none?
Actually, I drove that block three times yesterday, up and down. It's a very long block, as you stated, and having a school on Acacia, and also having a school on, oops, on Chevy Chase, probably there's a lot of school traffic over there as well. Why are we proposing, I mean, this is a question for the staff. The residents are requiring the speed bumps. Why can't we have a stop sign in the middle of the block, since it's a very long block, to make sure everybody stops? And there's no crosswalk there. There are a lot of people crossing the street as well.
Actually, they are actually crossing guards at the intersection of Boynton and Acacia.
Yes.
Putting in a stop sign in the middle of the block, most likely, is not going to be, it's difficult to enforce, number one, and most drivers will ignore it, because there's no reason for them to stop, because they're not yielding to any cross-street traffic, mainly it's just for the sake of stopping. So, that's why, the main purpose is to slow them down, it's not to stop.
Okay. What about crosswalks? There are no, we don't have any crosswalks in the middle of, even though it's not an intersection, but it's a school district.
Yes, there are crosswalks in the vicinity of the school, but not in the mid-block location, because chances are, if you put in a mid-block location for residential area, most people will not actually cross at a crosswalk, is where, most people will actually cross where they park and to where they live. They will cross diagonally.
But if the kids are going back and forth, or parents are walking across to pick up and drop kids, there may be traffic, school traffic, and kids are crossing the street.
Yes, but if they are related to the school, they can cross in front of the school using the crosswalk.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's a four-way stop, actually, at intersection of Boynton, and also at Adams and Acacia is all a four-way stop.
That's true, but as you said, it's 2,100 feet long. It's a long stretch.
Right.
And speeds do pick up and stretch out long.
If I could jump in, so, from what I understand, stop signs aren't really a good method to use to reduce speed. Its primary function is to help direct drivers as to who has the right of way. In fact, some of the research is showing that after a stop sign, people really do increase their speed when they otherwise wouldn't be. So, I don't know if this necessarily would have been a good, in the middle of the, I mean, if, my two cents.
Right, that's correct, actually.
And the objective is to slow the traffic down, not to stop the traffic. Any further questions or comments on this agenda item? Is there a motion, please?
Certainly. I will go ahead and move item 4B1, motion approving installation of four speed humps on Acacia Avenue between Boynton Street and Adams Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kurkjian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Chairperson Gonzalez?
Yes. Okay. The last item is for speed, potential speed humps on Garfield Avenue. So, if you would please give the staff report, and there is one name that has made a request to speak.
Chairperson Gonzalez, members of the commission, before we begin, I believe Mr. Co. has modified motions to hand out to the commission. As we need some modification in the language of the motion, as you've seen this item, it is a decision to deny the request for speed humps. And so, what the commission is here to do today is to review staff's decision to deny the application. And so, that modification was made to the motion and will be handed out.
And we have it in front of us.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Thank you. Please, please.
Thank you. So, this is the speed humps on Garfield Avenue between Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard. And again, this is a little unique situation. This is a location of Garfield Avenue, just some landmark, this is Pacific Auto Sales. Preonese sign is here, and it's between Brand Boulevard and Central Avenue. The city was contacted by residents on a 200 block of Garfield Avenue for installation of speed humps. And staff conducted an engineering study and determined that the 85th percentile speed was below the minimum threshold of 30 miles per hour, and the request was denied, and the requested would like to appeal to the TPC to reverse staff decision. So, what is 85th percentile speed? 85th percentile speed is also known as the critical speed, and it's the speed at or below which 85% of the traffic is moving. It is a very good indicator of how fast the majority of the drivers are going on a street segment. And so, how fast are people actually driving on Garfield Avenue? Staff actually did speech surveys on Garfield. We actually did it on six separate occasions, starting from November of 2015 all the way to April 30 of 2016. We did it on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. As you can see, the 85th percentile speed is a range from 26 to 29 miles per hour, and in no time was the 85th 30 miles per hour. So, the city's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program adopted by council in 2004 states that the staff will consider the installation of traffic calming devices if and only if a candidate street satisfies all traffic-related thresholds, and the 85th percentile speed is one of those thresholds. So, staff also look at, is the city's 85th percentile speed minimum threshold of 30 miles per hour reasonable? Are they setting too, are we setting them too high, so that, you know, a lot of streets are not meeting that criteria? And actually, on the contrary, we did a survey of some certain California cities. We looked at cities and their guidelines for installation of 85th percent, of speed humps. And on the left-hand side is the city name, and then the right-hand side is the threshold that they have in their guidelines. And for the city of Burbank, it's 30 miles per hour, exactly same as Glendale. Hawthorne is seven miles per hour over the speed limit. In this case, it will be 32 miles per hour, because Garfield is, the speed limit on Garfield is 25 miles per hour. Lancaster, 35. Santa Clarita, 30. Pasadena, 33. Redondo Beach, 32. Santa Ana, 35. And Santa Monica, 32. So, actually, the city of Glendale is one of the lowest, one of the lowest threshold for speed home installation. And since Garfield Avenue does not satisfy all required criteria for the installation of speed humps, as stipulated in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, staff recommendation is do not install a speed home on Garfield Avenue. While we do not recommend installation of speed humps, there are other speed reduction measures that we can do, we can install to discourage speeding and to alleviate citizens' concern about high-speed traffic. One is the installation of 25-miles-per-hour speed limit signs. We can also consider installation of temporary speed radar feedback signs. Those are the ones that display your actual travel speed, and we also notify police for additional speed enforcement. And at this point, I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
So, there is a speaker that wants to speak, but first, there may be some questions or comments from commissioners based on the staff report.
Yeah. Mr. Co., I know the dates, the dates you went out there. Do you have the time that you would be out there doing these surveys?
Actually, those are 24-hour, it's 24-hour counts. We have the counters out there that goes 24 hours.
Oh, I see.
Yes, it's average for the whole day.
It's a 24-hour count, okay.
Because speeding, usually, you'll have very high speed at night, so that's why we want to make sure we capture those times, in addition to the peak hour, because peak hour, usually, they do not go very fast, but it's the odd hours that would indicate a spike in the speed limit.
And then, can I, can you go to that one photo of the, of the street map, showing, I guess, the car dealer?
The car street map.
Just so I can, I think it was one of the.
From the east, I think.
The aerial photo.
Right. No.
I think it showed Pacific Auto Sales.
Oh, the aerial photo. Okay, I'll just go to the, right there, yes.
So, Pacific Auto Sales, is there a entrance there at Pacific Auto Sales on that Garfield side?
Yes, that is correct, yes, Commissioner Yakubian. There is a driveway to the Pacific Auto Sales, and that is actually, I believe, their service department.
Service, okay. Okay.
Can you please put up the, one of, some of the mitigating, I think you had three or four potential mitigating strategies? I think the first one, I just wanted to ask, please.
Let me see. Oh, this is the.
It was towards the end.
Yes. This way.
Yes. On the first bullet, the potential other reduction measures in lieu of the humps, installation of 25-mile-per-hour speed limit signs, a couple of questions. Where were, about, how many signs would be talking about, and are the, is the community aware of that reduction measures?
Yeah, actually, usually, within this situation like that, we will install the 25 miles per hour at the approach of the block, so.
On both sides?
Right, for both directions, yes.
And that would be permanent installation?
Yes.
And then, on the second bullet, a temper, I know what those are, I've seen those, that would be for a period of time?
That is correct. We, we find that actually, for temporary installation is even more effective than a permanent installation.
I would think so.
Because you have that element of supplies, people see something new, and that would display the approach speed.
So, the plural on signs means there would be two, one on each end?
That would be, yes, yes. We can install more, but usually, two will be enough.
And are you aware if the, the neighbors are aware of these speed reduction measures, if humps are not approved, excuse me, if the commission concurs with the staff recommendation?
No, I'm, we have not notified the neighbors yet, no.
So, this is, any neighbors that might be here, this is the first time they may be aware of these other speed reduction measures?
That is correct.
Okay.
Chair Gonzalez, I'd also like to add that during our analysis, we have determined that this block of Garfield Avenue qualifies for preferential parking within the guidelines set by the city council. So, once that gets implemented, we hope that it's going to have an impact on speeding.
And can please address preferential parking? Can you please?
The program essentially enables the residents, and the residents only, to obtain permits to be able to park on that street, and any other visitors, they have to pay extra for to get permits, but the commercial businesses will be precluded from being able to park on that street.
But that seems to be another measure entirely different, it's not directly related to this item.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from the staff report?
No, going back to off the subject, this is, from what I recall, it's only, they can park only on south side of the street. It's a one-side street parking, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And if they get a such permit, can they park on both sides? It's still only on one south side of the street?
Only on the permissible side.
On the side, okay, thank you.
Simply because the street is very narrow, it's only 26 feet curb-to- curb at the residential park of the street.
Can you please put the map up again? The one, not the aerial, but the other one, please.
Okay, the map, oh, that one.
Yeah, the one that shows the dealership, I guess that's it. Although I know the staff is recommending not to put in the speed humps, if they, if this would have met the requirements, how many would the staff would have proposed?
If we, you know, if we, staff is going to install, our speed humps will be two. Mainly, it's in the residential area. We do not speed, put in speed humps in front of commercial establishment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? We have one gentleman that would like to speak on this item. Nothing else? Mr. Jonathan Beddus, please.
Good evening, council members.
Welcome.
I brought some analysis on the survey for you guys that might shed a little more light on the traffic conditions of the street. If you guys are interested, I'm happy to pass it around. So, I'd like to start off by saying that, it wasn't pointed out, but I initially got a petition for these speed bumps signed when I was getting the petition done for the preferential permit parking. When I got that petition signed, I took the initiative to get it done on my own, and I got signatures that represented 90% of all the residents. got signatures that represented ninety percent of all the residents on the street. The petition was met with very great enthusiasm, and as you can see, ninety percent is unanimous support.
Excuse me, Mr. Bettis, is that for the humps or for the preferential parking?
This is for the speed bumps.
Thank you.
When I tried to turn this petition into public engineering, they denied the petition, saying that I had to use one of their petitions that had a packet that included the location of the speed bumps, as well as a list of the pros and cons of the speed bumps. And I'd have to share that with all the residents. I went ahead and did that, and still managed to get eighty-seven percent of the residents on the street to sign off on it. I likely would have gotten ninety percent again, had all the residents been home the times that I tried to get this signed. As you can see in the pictures, it's a very narrow street that only has, it's so narrow that it only allows parking on one side. So it's very cramped and not too conducive to heavy traffic. So I asked for the raw data from the survey from public engineer number two, Pastor Casanova, and he happily gave me that data. I started crunching the data, and the data showed that one in three cars drive above the speed limit between the hours of nine and six. Over seventy-one cars during the time that the survey was done went over forty miles per hour. All we know is that they went above forty. Any cars that went over forty miles per hour, they didn't give specific speeds. Over nine hundred and forty-eight cars were going over thirty miles per hour. So the data shows that between nine and six PM, on average, we have at least one car driving a minimum of forty miles per hour on our street. We have one and a half cars driving a minimum of thirty-eight miles per hour on the street. And almost three cars an hour driving a minimum of thirty-six miles per hour on our street. And in that same time, an average of twenty-eight cars drive above the speed limit upwards of thirty-seven miles per hour on our street. Three hundred cars drive above the speed limit between the hours of eleven AM and two PM, the times when kids are most likely to be outside playing. Having said that, most of the residents don't allow their kids to play on the street due to all the speeding. What causes the speeding? Well, as you can see, there's quite a few reasons. Between being flanked by four car dealerships and a body shop, they love to do their test drives on our street, and they just tend to open the engines up. On top of this, because of the center divider on Brand, a lot of people will use Garfield as a shortcut to get to Central because they have no other ways of crossing over due to the center divider. Again, I'd like to reiterate that eighty-seven percent of the residents on the street overwhelmingly support getting speed bumps on our street. Now, I've brought all this to the attention of Rubik Galanian, as well as Pastor Casanova, and I've actually yet to get a good reason as to why we're being denied, with the exception of not meeting that eighty-five percentile threshold. I'm happy to give the two examples that were cited to me if you'd like to hear them. Okay, one of them was from Pastor Casanova. One of the reasons that he gave for why it wouldn't be good to install speed bumps would be because hypothetically, there could be a scenario in which a drunk driver is speeding down the street, crashes into the speed bump, and then gets in a car accident. I found it a little odd that the city would be looking out for the safety of drunk drivers rather than the residents of the street. Another example, which was given to me by Mr. Galanian, was that because Glendale is an affluent city, we're known for having deep pockets. And if a scenario in which a lowrider scratched his car on the speed bump, he could be within the right to sue the city for this. Now, again, I don't think these are justifiable reasons to deny us these speed bumps when, sure, we didn't break the thirty mile per hour average speed, but the numbers show that we have a very healthy amount of speeding based on the survey that you guys did. And again, roughly ninety percent of the residents enthusiastically signed off on these
Any questions for Mr. Bettis? Yes, please, Rubik.
Chair Gonzalez, I'd like to make a clarification on gentleman's statement. I never said Glendale is an affluent city and we have deep pockets. I did, however, mention that we have guidelines and we have standards to follow. And if we don't follow them, if a driver's vehicle gets damaged as a result of installing speed humps that don't meet warrants, then they can do the city of Glendale. And every government, in people's opinion, has deep pockets. That's what I had noted.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Question for Rubik. So Rubik, you were discussing the, in the future, this idea of the preferential parking coming out. Can you explain to us how that, in your opinion, would help with the speeding issue?
Commissioner Yocobian, when I met with Mr. Perez, he had noted that the dealers parked their cars on that street. So once we establish the preferential parking on that block of Garfield Avenue, they will not be able to park their streets, and hence the resulting potential speeding to pick up or drop off their cars. That's the only reason I could see that could help the situation, one reason.
I have another question for Mr. Coe. The approximate price of installation, would it be similar to what was indicated for Elk?
Yes, in this case, the cost roughly is about thirty-five hundred dollars to four thousand dollars per hump. So would be recommended, two will be seven to eight thousand dollars.
All right. And the price to remove humps would be what? In case later on down the road, that turns out to be a wrong decision to put humps?
That I do not believe I have that. That would be just the demolition of the pavement. I, I think, based on the unit price, I don't have.
And have we had instances in the city where we've had removals of speed humps? Is that, is that a situation that doesn't come?
No, we have not encountered that.
So once it's up, once they're up, they're pretty much up?
Correct, that is correct, yes. Actually, unless we have support of the residents, seventy-five percent or more residents for the removal of it, then we'll remove it.
So we have to go, Commissioner Yocobian, the reverse process. There has to be a petition requesting the removal.
Okay, okay.
And that requires a protocol similar to this, in a way?
Chair person Gonzalez.
I have a question for Mr. Perez. What do you mean by the median on Brand being blocked? People are taking Garfield as a crossover to cross to Central.
Right through here.
Go right through it.
They have plants that separate both sides of Brand.
Yes.
And because of that, you can't make a left turn until you get onto Maple, another further line. If anybody were to put me on Brand, wanting to make a left to get onto Windsor, after basically Garfield, down Garfield so that they can then come around.
It'd be best to stay next to the, next to the microphone, please, just for the record.
I just wanted to point it out to you.
Yeah, you, you might just briefly say it again, so it's.
Okay, so there, on Brand Boulevard, there's a center divider that separates both sides of Brands, southbound and northbound. And people, and the only way you can get through is by going through Garfield because the center divider doesn't apply there. And people will often use Garfield Avenue as a shortcut to get to Windsor, be it from Central or Brand. Because if you're going eastbound on Windsor, you're forced to make a right turn. You can't cut through to Windsor.
Yeah.
And vice versa. And like I said, the car dealerships, they love doing test drives. Pacific Auto Sales and the auto body shop, when they're done working on cars, doing repairs, they love to test drive on Garfield Avenue, just to make sure all the repairs they've done have gone smoothly.
For how long have you lived on Garfield?
Since 2003.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the block of Garfield between Central and Brand is actually very, very short. It's about almost eight hundred feet, that's a little bit short of eight hundred feet. And especially for the residential portion of it, it's only twenty-six feet curb-to-curb wide. So it really doesn't have too much distance to speed. That's the reason why this one is unique, this one is different from the other one. You do not have a long distance to gain speed. As the gentleman mentioned, on one side, you have the median, on the other side, it's a stop control intersection at Central.
So I have a comment and a question, please. A comment first is that according to the staff report, the support via the petition is actually ninety-two percent. So, yeah, so just so you know that, I think you were saying you had less. But if I understand, Mr. Bettis, your viewpoint is that you are questioning the work that was done to determine the eighty-five percent percentile speed. The ones that you, you gave us here, you got this information based on your own work?
Based, based on the data from your survey. This is information, data that I pulled from the survey you guys conducted.
Right. And it still doesn't meet the eighty-five percentile?
By two miles per hour.
But it doesn't meet the eighty-five percent?
And, and I will also.
Mr. Bettis, if you could speak from the lectern, thank you.
Oh, thank you, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were short by two miles per hour. I'd also like to point out that I'm not so sure that the way the survey is done is a fair assessment. They put these strips on the ground that I think make people naturally inclined to slow down because they don't necessarily know what they are, and they're kind of worried about running them over. I'd also like to point out that on one of those days, it was raining, and as we all know, people tend to drive slower on rainy days, and that was actually the day that we had the highest average, which was twenty-nine miles per hour.
One of the six days?
Yes. Well, the data that I'm doing is from the last five days from this year. That six day is from November 2015. So I'm, I'm working with, with the five days from this year. As you can see, the twenty-nine right there, westbound, that was on a rainy day when people drive even slower. And, and the survey shows that, on average, at least one car drives over forty miles per hour every hour.
What are your, I think I saw your body language over there indicate that you were not aware of the mitigating bullets that were put up there?
I have all this information.
No, I'm sorry, oh, you do have it now?
Yeah, no, it was part of the survey data that was given to me.
No, I'm talking about where the staff put up that if, if the commission were to.
Oh, yeah, no, that was, that was news to me.
Just, just let me finish. If this, if the commission were to approve the staff's recommendation, which is not to put in the humps. I would, I, I thought I heard earlier or saw earlier that you were not aware of these speed reduction measures.
Yes, I'm just now finding out about this.
Okay, so my question to you, please, is what is your viewpoint regarding these reduction speed measures, since that's one of the objectives of wanting to reduce the speed on that street? Because I've also heard people say that sometimes these are better than the humps.
Well, having worked, having tried working with this, with the mayor's office regarding these issues, we've already tried the third bullet point, and we've been at this for almost two months now, and I've seen no results. The installation of temporary speed radar feedback, I mean, I'd be interested in seeing what the results would be. And then the installation of a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign, I think by and large, people know that the speed limit on a residential street is twenty-five miles per hour. And as the survey shows, people are more than happy to be driving well past that speed limit. And frankly, I think that the reason the average was brought down so low was due to the residents always driving slow, coming home, leaving their homes.
I live on a busy street, and actually, the city, not because of my request or anyone's request that I even know, that second bullet, when it's put on, it's incredible how it stops, it slows down the speed. The one relative to the temporary speed radar feedback signs, I just wanted you to know that, and I've heard people here say that sometimes these are better than humps.
Well, I'm not opposed to them, and I'd be more than happy to see what the results of installing those would be. But I would like to say that I feel there is something to be said for ninety-two percent approval rating on the speed bumps from all the residents.
Okay, yes.
Also, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, one comment on the percentage of driver, percentage of driver driving above the speed limit. Actually, we, and the gentleman is correct, actually, for Garfield Avenue, we have anywhere between thirty to thirty-four percent of the drivers go above the speed limit. However, if you look at Acacia, it's thirty-eight percent, and Elk is forty-two percent of the drivers go above the speed limit. So in this case, Garfield actually has the least percentage of the drivers go above the speed limit.
If I may say something, as he pointed out earlier, because it's a smaller street, they also have less distance to gain that speed.
I'm sorry, your time is done, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Unless the commission had a question of Mr. Bettis?
Oh, okay, I got you, thank you. Okay, staff, do you have any other comments on this before the commissioners have any other further questions or comments? Commissioners have any question, any further questions or comments?
Well, yes, well, I just wanted to say, you know, it was very nice to see, and I'm sorry, his name, the gentleman's.
Mr. Bettis. Jonathan Bettis.
Bettis, Mr. Bettis, thank you so much for coming forth and putting the time and effort into a cause that's very important to you and your neighbors. So I'd like to say we're probably the, the commission that's going to be the most sensitive to issues regarding, you know, safety and speed. I personally would have liked to have seen more residents speaking today on this, on this issue. And, but with that being said, as far as, as far as my position seems to be on this, is that there needs to be a, a kind of a look at the totality and our responsibility to the entire city. And the city staff has come up with some alternatives, and they're great alternatives. In many other cities in the state, you don't get those kinds of alternatives. There are alternatives that, because of the great city of Glendale, we can come up with. And in addition to these speed reduction measures that they are proposing for that street, you know, there's the, also the, the idea of the preferential parking, which is a, it could be a huge game changer for that street. And it would seem to me, in my, my opinion, irresponsible to just use the city funds to put the, to put these humps in without trying these measures first. And I think it's, it would, it would behoove us, in term, from my position, to be responsible to see how those work. I would caveat that by saying, if they don't work, and the preferential parking down the road, if that should come through, and that also doesn't work, if this is brought before us again, it will be a much stronger case because you have, and we have tried all possible measures, but in from my opinion, it's really important to try all of these measures before we just start putting, putting those humps on the street. And I am very sensitive, especially where you are with the car dealerships. I've always felt that way in all my years here, being on, on the commission. You are in a unique position, being on those streets, so close to those dealerships. I do feel, I do feel, I definitely understand you have, I believe you wholeheartedly, that these are issues that you face. But my feeling is that that's something we need to try, these reduction measures. In addition, I always encourage the city to reach out to the auto dealerships, to every so often remind them that we are in an ecosystem of different people and groups and residential areas that, you know, to watch how they do their test driving. Mr. Galanian?
Commissioner, Commissioner Yocobian, that's an excellent point you noted. As a matter of fact, we met with the BMW dealership, and they had scheduled a meeting to meet with, directly, personally meet with Mr. Perez. And they have ordered their employees try to avoid that street, not to park on that street, and be mindful of the residents. Have guaranteed that.
So I generally concur with Commissioner Yocobian's comments, and also thank Mr. Bettis for the work that he's done on this matter. And I also feel that, since your response to number three said that you didn't see much difference, and given what I just heard about the dialogue with the, with the auto dealership, it would be good for the city staff to please, while I know. dealership, it would be good for the city staff to please, while I know we don't have control of the police department, to see that that is actually going to happen so that the residents see the, the difference, and that hopefully, the second bullet is going to make a big difference on that street. And it sounds to me like it would be best for us to, short of hearing from other commissioner, to support these, the recommendation of the city staff with the understanding that these matters should be looked at seriously. And I think the major reason for this has to do with the fact that we have these guidelines, and if we go different than them, we do have other, from the city, as mentioned, more of a liability in the longest run. So any further comments?
No, I do echo the opinion of my colleagues. And one of the things that, as Mr. Galanian said, maybe we can, we should send a letter to all dealers, not only BMW, plus the auto body shop and people, perhaps on Central, or the mechanic shops. And once in a while, if the police department hands someone a ticket or somebody who works there, if they're test driving their cars on the street, maybe the word can get out to avoid the street. Furthermore, looking at this report, I see why city staff is going the direction that they're going, because only really speeds occurring between 11 and 2 o'clock, where people are at work, and there are no kids in the middle of the block between 11 and 2. So during rush hour, there's not much traffic. So if we can get rid of the neighbors, auto dealers, or people who are in auto business, I think the street will be fairly calm. And, and I don't think bumps is warranted as staff recommends. Having said that, go for parking. I mean, that's something, if you, if we go, if you're, since you're entitled for parking, preferential parking, get it and deter the neighbors on Brand and Central parking on south side of the street and on that part, so let them use their own, utilize their own parking spaces. This way, they have no business on your quiet, little tiny stretch of residential block. Because most of your street, I would say 1/3 of your street is commercial, both on Central and, and Brand Boulevard. So residential is fairly short, as Mr. Ko stated, it's probably 800 feet long. That's a very short block of residential. And if, between 11 and 2, we can alleviate those traffic by contacting the dealers, I think your block should have no problem. Again, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Can I, I just want to jump in with a question, Mr. Ko or Mr. Galanian? So how would we, as a, as a city, installing these, like the temporary speed back radar, how do we get a quantitative understanding of how it's affecting the traffic in terms of the overall picture? Meaning, will that be, could that be put up with, while conducting another survey so that we can actually, you can actually have the data as to how, as opposed to instantaneous, you know, your feedback? You're going 29 miles, you're going 32 miles, but how could then we have a record of, of the driving pattern to know if it's successful?
Commissioner Yakubian, actually, the signs nowadays, they are capable of retaining the data, and we need to download it, or we need a laptop and download the data. And we will have the speech survey.
Well, I mean, you can retain those records for the residents if they wanted to come back to see what the, what the results of these temporary signs were?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, that's what I'd like to hear.
I have a follow-up on that, but I'll wait for the motion first. Is there any further discussion, excuse me, is there a motion on this item, please?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move action item for a, excuse me, for C report regarding the motion, C1, excuse me, motion denying the installation of two-speed humps on Garfield Avenue between Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry for the interruption. Are we reading from the amended motion that was handed out?
Quite right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's very close.
We have a lot of paperwork up here, I apologize. So.
It's right at the top.
Is that just going to be agenda item 1, for 1? Or motion upholding staffs?
That's it.
Right, motion upholding staff's recommendation to deny the request to install speed humps on Garfield Avenue between Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard based on the reason that the 85, 85th percentile speed on a Garfield Avenue is below the minimum threshold of 30 miles per hour.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Anish, please.
Commissioner Kirkjian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Chair Person Gonzalez?
Yes. So just following up on Mauro's comments, I think one of the ways to continue to encourage your diligence on this, Mr. Pettis, is this information that I just heard about the installation of temporary speed radar feedback signs is available to you and to the neighbors, and you can get on the agenda here if you need to, if I'm not mistaken, by oral communication in not have, in order to make your thoughts and concerns expressed if need be, so back to this Commission, and is that's correct, right, that could be done?
Yes.
Without, not an action item, but just.
Chair Gonzalez, it will not be agendized, but the gentleman is welcome at any time to attend the Commission meeting at the oral communication.
Right. And it wouldn't be an action item, but it would be an item to really respond to your comment, too, about how the residents could feed back to this Commission if some of the things you're seeing are not being satisfied relative to the third bullet and the second bullet, if not the first bullet. So that's encouraged as far as this Commissioner is concerned. I believe that finishes item number four. Am I correct on that? And I think we're moving to item number five.
Yes, that item number five is Commission Staff Comments and Updates.
Okay. Rubik, you want to start with any updates?
Chair Gonzalez, I don't have an update for this meeting.
What?
Apologize.
Nothing's going on in the city?
There is a lot going on in the city.
But no updates, okay? Commissioners, any comments or updates?
Well, actually, what I'd like to do is ask City Attorney's Office to present us with, to kind of define us what functional and economic obsolescence is. Because today was a classic example of this, where we approved two applications, denied one, because residents are kind of misguided. And if there's a more defined, sort of a definition of exactly, the residents need to know where they live as well, whether they're near the, they live near dealership or they live near industrial properties, they live near school, and, and sort of either rent or buy, by buyer beware or tenant beware notion versus going there, rent a place or buy a place and get stuck with similar problems. And even though they have a right to bring up an application pursuant to city ordinance, if there is certain threshold, that size, they're granted. But by the same token, before getting there, they should, there should be mechanism for them to know what's happening, what they're getting into in terms of location. And it's like residents on Los Feliz Boulevard, for example, they can't get together and ask for speed bumps. We don't, we want to avoid such things and create discomfort among city residents and also for them to get sort of bad taste in their mouth against the city or city staff because something was not approved.
Commissioner Kirkjian, if I may, the guidelines set forth 10 criteria. There's no discretion given to staff on how they're going to, whether they're going to approve or recommend the installation of speed humps or deny them. The criteria is non-economic factors, and they're all based on traffic, speed, safety. For instance, the third application to deny, that did not meet the 85, 85th percentile, and that is why it was denied, and there were no other factors. And within the guidelines, it states that a candidate street that does not meet the 85th percentile is automatically, does not go into the other factors, and it's denied outright. And so that's why it was, and there was no consideration of any other economic factors in, in the decision to deny that.
I understand, but having said that, if someone chooses to live in South Brand's specific planned district or in downtown, specific planned districts, and residents are increasing as development increased downtown, naturally, there should be more traffic. And that has nothing to do with economic, that has to do more with functional obsolescence part of it. So functionally, the streets are getting more, we're getting more use on our streets. So, and that's something that should be communicated to residents about the functionality of the streets where they're living on, or the areas that they're living on, or the pockets within which they're living in. So that's what I'm trying to say, not so much for the economics part of it. If you're, same follows, if someone's adjacent to school and kids are playing ball at school and, and ball is coming all the way to, making too much noise or coming to their backyard, it's functional obsolescence. If you live next to a golf course and you're, you're breaking glass all the time, that's functional obsolescence. You can't come to the city and asking for the golf course to shut down because they're getting hit by golf balls. So that's what I'm trying to say, for us to create more of a tenant beware, buyer beware sort of scenario.
More work, huh? Just put some more work in.
Any other comments? Were you going to comment on that? Okay. Any other comments from commissioners or updates?
Was going to congratulate fellow Commissioner Sahakian. He's not here, but what's the official job position? He's been appointed interim head of emergency management services in the city of Los Angeles? Something like that. That sounds good enough, Aram, so congratulations. We still want you here, so come back.
And regarding coming here, am I correct that the next scheduled meeting for the Commission is August the 22nd, unless there's a special meeting required before that?
That is correct.
So please, please mark your calendars for August the 22nd. Any further comments or questions? Would entertain a motion for adjournment, please?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please?
No roll call necessary.
Okay, so all those in favor, just stand. Thank you.